Welcome to the August 9th Planning Board meeting. As always, we're gonna start with reviewing the previous month's minutes. And we paid a couple bills, we acted on the, we had two public hearings for a Kasich minor subdivision and the SH29 Westneck and Robert Lipstal Lois Morris lot line adjustment. Close those and pass the Kasich minor subdivision final resolution. Everything else seems to be, we did also discuss the white, proposed white amendments to the amended final resolution. And which we're going to talk further about today. Everything seems okay to me. Did you guys have any additions, subtractions? So I make a motion to accept the minutes from July 12th, 2022. If I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
We have a bunch of correspondence. Which isn't part of the agenda. If anyone wants a copy, a lot of it dealt with the white amendment. Final paperwork for the CASIC minor subdivision. And the 20 to 23 budget that we're going to review. And a couple wetlands applications for the Sings and the Brienzas. We have two bills this time. One for EHA for the month of, presume this is July. Where we F did a bunch of work on K six, the minor subdivision. Talking to the town engineer and preparing the legal notices for the two public hearings. As well as attending our meeting. And the total was $1,659.37. As always, I think this is money well spent, so I make a motion to accept the July EHA invoice in the amount of $1,659.37. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I have.
That was actually June, this is.
That was June, my apologies. This is the July then EHA invoice. For a total of $2,039.6. This was mostly spent on the white subdivision. And attending a planning board meeting. And again, I think money well spent, so I make a motion to accept the July EHA invoice in the amount of $2,039.6. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? We have two resolutions. The first is for SH29 Westneck LLC. Lot line adjustment. Beth was nice enough to assemble this. It's pretty straightforward, Beth, right? Is there anything of note that you want to point out?
No, there was nothing unique or that wasn't discussed at the meeting, so it should be pretty straightforward.
So basically, it's a final resolution for the lot line adjustment and it outlines what the applicant still needs to do. There's some minor mapping conditions that we discussed earlier. And the various developing meets and bounds for the existing parcel and for the 15 five foot, 15 foot wide access easement. And some notes regarding the driveway, which we all discussed was going to remain a dirt road. And then some filing requirements of proof of deeds coming to us for review first. And then filing. And it is our policy too, not to sign the final maps until the Health Department approval is received. So I just want to mention again. Do you either one of you have any questions or comments on this?
No, I've looked over it once.
So.
It's good because you're making, you know, a non-conforming a lot more conforming. You're entering one, you know.
Sterilizing it as the legal. Okay, so I make a motion to accept resolution number 11 of 2022. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
The second resolution we have is for the conditional final approval for the subdivision of Nelson C. White. This is amending the final resolution we approved in October of 2021. Basically, we've agreed to all of the verbiage and conditions that the White family had requested of us. With the exception of extending the SWIP. And we did permit the extension of the bond through the end of December. Seth, did you want to describe this a little bit? Because I know it's a little more complicated.
Um, I could, or do you, did you want to open it up to let the applicants speak at all before we do resolutions or?
Uh, we can, if you think is that appropriate, or I mean, the public hearing was last month, but we certainly can open it up.
Well, there was no technical public hearing. It was more of a discussion last month, but I do think that we should find out any information from, if the applicant has any information from the engineer or status. What's going on? And then the board, I think the board should also discuss. Have a discussion before we adopt a resolution.
Okay, Karen, did you hear anything?
This based on, you know, the board's comments from last time, but the board should discuss the matter before they, because it's not usually customary to have the resolution.
Correct, where we actually did. Tried to rush this through as a courtesy to the applicant, so.
Correct, so I think the board should also still have the discussion on the matter as well.
Karen, I see you're online. Were you able to speak to Jeff Butler?
Yeah, so I've had a few conversations with Jeff Butler and also Kelly Rosado over at Land Use. I don't know if you recall, but back when the initial subdivision was approved, Butler Engineering and Chuck Bowman from Land Use had coordinated efforts in filing for the SWIP and getting the NOI all signed off on. In speaking with them, I did learn that they had needed some pieces of historical information. They were looking for the 2006 underlying DEC permit, which we provided to them today. The other piece that they were looking for in order to complete the SWIP was the state historical preservation letter. Which I'm sure is either in the town planning board files or buried somewhere in my files, so we will continue to look for that. Other than that, I believe that they had all the information that they needed to file the SWIP with the town. That's my understanding. So I have been moving heaven and earth to try to get this done. Some of this is out of my control in terms of piecing the technical pieces together. I've been assured that everybody is working hard at this, but it may be something where we may need some more time in actually getting the application into the town. As I said, you know, I know that they were waiting for these additional pieces of information, one of which we have provided, so I'm hoping this last piece will either be in the town records or my records. It's just a matter of finding it. So that.
Okay, and this amendment to the SWIP, right, so it's, it shouldn't be that time consuming on the DC on the town's review and the DC's review.
Correct, because a lot of the infrastructure has decreased, so a lot of the drainage, all those numbers and calculations have changed, but in a good way. But it's just still a matter of putting it in the actual application to be submitted to the town. So I did provide Jill Lombardi with an update on where we were yesterday. Just so that he knows that it's coming and that we just are waiting on a couple of these open items.
Sounds great. So this sounds like it's very feasible to get this done in time.
Well, as I said, I hope so, you know, we are moving everything and doing the best that we can in order to get all the information in to Land Use and Butler so that the application can be submitted to the town.
Great, great. Okay. So it sounds like all our conditions that we've outlined in the, in this draft resolution are acceptable then to all. Beth, did you want to go through the resolution a little bit?
Sure. So basically, the resolution is just reciting about what the original application was, what the modifications were, that there were modifications in 2021. That the original agreement didn't go through and the applicants were back again to request additional modifications to the final, to the conditional final approval. We updated the approved driveway and drainage plan to the November 18th, 2021 map. And then as far as condition one. It was amended to submit the SWIP and NOI prior to conveyance. Which we just discussed. Condition three was amended to read that the improvement subject to performance bond number one shall be completed by December 31st, 2022. Condition six, we amended the parking lot easement as was requested. To now say that access to, access easement to the county and town of its entirety of our artist lane from South Mary to the end of the cul-de-sac adjacent to lots four, five, and six. And then condition nine, I added the language that was requested in the applicant's letter to the board. The only difference was. Let's see.
We added the mowing schedule of monthly.
We added the mowing from monthly from May to October, May through October, which was I believe discussed with, since CPF?
Yes, I briefly spoke about it with Gordon Gooding.
And let's see, and then there was a request about the signs. The request of the applicants made about the signs were added in. We also added in language allowing for an identification sign. All of the signage will be decided between the town, the HOA, and the county. And then also the final was replacing the last paragraph. I know the town and the town board and the applicants were concerned about a situation whereby the, the app, the properties would transfer. And the subdivision, there may be an issue with the subdivision, whether it's a timing issue, where there may be a default or something like that, and then these properties have transferred and what happens in this situation? So the language that was suggested by the applicant has now been included and replaces the original language. And in that language, that just provides options such as requiring the owner, the owners to get an extension of the applicable timelines from the planning board. And so the language that you submitted is what I just included, and that's it. So the suggestions that were taken, that were asked by the applicant were, were, were taken. The only exception was the SWIP. The board was adamant that it be submitted prior to the conveyance as is a normal condition for the board for these types of applications and in order to be consistent. We, the board wanted to keep that in, so.
I want to reiterate on that point that I do believe the board made a mistake of allowing an extension on the SWIP on the previous applicant, on the previous round. We don't allow this for any other application, so, and it seems like it's very attainable in the period of time we have going on, so I'm comfortable with asking the applicant for it before we release the, before the closing. Do you guys have any thoughts with this? Or are you comfortable with everything? Basically, it's, I'm putting in, bringing to everything you're going to ask for.
You know, it's just very complicated, you know, I'd like to make sure, you know, defer to Beth, you know, that everything is, you know, done legally and so forth. You know, that's basically it.
Julie, any thoughts?
No, no, just that, you know, this, it's not like we're doing a whole new SWIP over again, so they, they have it saying, just amending an existing application. And we have seen, like we said, complicated projects, far more complicated than this goes through a short amount of time, so.
David, do you have any, any thoughts? I know you're mid-travels, but.
Absolutely, my pleasure. I have no issues with the, as proposed, as written by Beth.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Bill?
You're frozen. One thing that in regard to the SWIP and the NOI in terms of timing, we'd like to ask the board to consider allowing the transactions to close with an escrow in order to get the SWIP and the NOI submitted to the town and approved by DEC.
Mr. Chairman, it's Caleb White. Just one thing I haven't spoken to you all, and I appreciate all that has been done over the past many years. Our concern is with the, one of our concerns is if the driveway needs to be in by December 31st. And we are waiting on the SWIP and the NOI. The time period between when we can get going on the driveway is, is in a time of still lots of construction going on on the island is just truncated. And so if we could put money in escrow to provide the town comfort that the NOI and the SWIP will be taken care of, but we can close and get moving on the driveway construction from Manantik to the parking lot, that would certainly allow for what's still potentially a problematic project plan of, you know, let's say, August 31st to the end of the year. But that is certainly weighing on my father and, and me when we sort of think about what we want to try to put in place to meet your conditions.
So there are two separate entities. There's the SWIP and there's the construction. The construction of the road is bonded. Two of the board members are in the construction industry and we're familiar with what is the reality of this little road going in. I can speak for all my application, my projects that I typically don't find the ground to get too firm until about New Year's. So that's why the December 31st window was put in. And this little road with some drywall should not be more than a week or two work. So personally, I think it's a very easy thing to get in, even if you were only to start in October. Three months is quite a bit of time just to do, in my mind, it's a two-week project. As far as the slip goes, we don't have really a bond against it. We're hearing that it's very feasible, only one document is needed that's been produced in the past. We have to, and I'm more than willing to search through the planning board records to find it, if we can find it. And that we're being told by our engineer, his firm reviews the SWIPs for the town, that they will green light this to put it in front of their pile, and that the county then only, the DC only takes a week or seven days. I've been told by another engineer who does a lot of expediting, he's seen things come through in four days. So again, I'm seeing that this could be done by the August 31 deadline that you guys have outlined as being your drop dead date. In the past, I've seen these.
Target date, I think.
Right, it's a target date.
Yeah, that's, that's better to know then, that it's not a drop dead date. So if it took a week longer, does that really mess everything up? And, and as far as signatures go, we're in a world where we have FedEx and DHL and stuff can be overnighted right away, so I'm really personally struggling with the concept of why it's such an issue. Why it has to be the August 31st? But it sounds like that everything can be produced by then.
Can I jump in?
You're also, on your end also, if I may, have a lot of agreements to get in front of us for our review. And I know that's going to take quite a bit of time to assemble. With the county, with, with your family, with the HOA, and with the town, so. I don't know that you're going to be able to get all those things to us by the 31st. Also, we will bend over backwards as we have been at every turn to move this along. But I don't want to move on, allow something on your application that we don't permit from others. Bill?
We're actually feeling pretty good about our paperwork, but point taken, thank you.
Ian, can you hear me now?
I can, yes, Bill.
Okay, I'm sorry for the technological problems we had here. We are very sensitive to the concerns that the planning board has expressed regarding the filing of the SWIP and the NOI. And as Karen indicated, we have really tried to move heaven and earth since you expressed these concerns in the July meeting. I know Karen has had many conversations with our engineer and our permit processor. I've had conversations with the people at DEC and we are trying to do everything we can to get all this paperwork in the hands of your engineer by the end of this week. I think it's also important that you know that the county and the town have gone to great lengths to try to move the closing process along. We have actually prepared and signed all of the actual transactional documents for the conveyance of all five lots. We have signed the current drafts of all of the planning board documents that you have required, including the HOA covenant release, the HOA resolution, the parking easement, the hammerhead easement, and the amendment to the town declaration. We understand that some fine tuning may be required to these documents based on the final language of your amended resolution. But the family, all of the members of the family have signed off on all these documents and delivered to Karen's office, signature pages for attachment to the final versions of all these documents. So we really have done everything imaginable to try to put any doubt that you might have to rest as far as the family's commitment to moving the process along. As far as the SWIP and the NOI are concerned, we had some conversations late this afternoon, which I think Karen and Caleb alluded to, in which we proposed as a gesture of good faith to the planning board that we would set firm deadlines for the submission of the SWIP and the NOI to the planning board for your approval. And a deadline for the approval of those documents by the town and ultimately by DEC. And if we miss any of those deadlines, we'd have $50,000 set aside in escrow that would be available to the town or the CPF, depending on how you wanted to play it. So that if we missed the deadline and didn't have the SWIP and the NOI approved within those timeframes, you'd have an immediate effective remedy. We think that all those things are unlikely to occur. But all I can tell you is, and you've heard me say this dozens of times throughout our dealings since early 2021, it's extremely important to the family that we be able to schedule the closings and start making the final preparations that are going to be required by all the parties to be ready to deliver documents, deliver checks, and transfer title to the unit, the properties. So if there is any way that the planning board can see its way clear to come up with a slightly different approach to the timing of the submission of the SWIP and the NOI that really would put the icing on the cake for this deal. You have assurances from Karen and me on behalf of the family that we understand the planning board's concerns, that we're working diligently to accommodate them, that all of our documents are basically ready to go as soon as we see the final language of your amended resolution. So I would just ask you to consider the possibility of allowing the closings to take place. If we put money in escrow to assure you that the SWIP and the NOI will be submitted on a timely basis. You already have a performance bond for $120,000 that will provide the assurance that the driveway will be constructed within whatever deadline you would pose. It seems to me that's the more critical deadline in all of this. The SWIP is just a stepping stone. The ultimate goal is the final construction of the driveway. So I understand the planning board's position. I would just ask you to give us a little bit of flexibility so that we can go ahead and schedule these long delayed closings and get on with the process of finalizing our documents.
I heard about this potential escrow about an hour ago. The other planning board members have not. It does bring a couple immediate questions to myself that I come up with is, one is $50,000 is really very little in regards to $11.1 million sale. So maybe it's an easy thing to say, we'll just, you know, not do the SWIP, don't get it in time. And then, okay, maybe the CPF gets the $50,000 or the town. But then who's going to complete the slip once that doesn't get done by a deadline? So I am, I am struggling with that concept. It's easy, you can collect 11.1 right off the 50,000 and that's not an issue. So I don't know. What do you guys? Let me ask around the other.
I didn't even.
Bill, hold up a second.
I didn't even owe us $50,000, so I'll just now.
So that's what Bill would offer is 50,000.
50,000.
What are your thoughts on this?
And this would just to be insured in case they don't get the SWIP.
The SWIP done and say, hey, we gave them an extra month to do it.
It would allow them also to close, it would allow them to close on the properties prior to the board getting the SWIP. So the $50,000 would be set aside at closing for the purpose in an escrow account to, to provide some assurance that the SWIP will be completed. The, and then the, the properties can close and would be transferred. Then it would be another 30 days, so if the SWIP isn't completed in 30 days, then there would be either something that $50,000 would, whether it goes to CPF or the planning board or the, I don't know who it would go to, the town somehow or what would happen to with it. Then after that, then that would be it.
So it's unsure where it would actually go, first of all, and then we also don't know what would ensure this would.
I think since this is the CPF's deal, the money would go to the CPF. I have no problem with that. The planning board doesn't need the funds. The question is, if it doesn't get done and the money gets transferred, now who's going to do it? The town's not going to finish the SWIP and it's not in place. So I don't think, you know, $50,000 is, if we were going to even. if we were going to even entertain this, A, I I really think you'll be able to get the SWIP done. Even if you have to push that August thirty first date back a week or, you know, maybe two weeks. I think that's going to be done, and that's what I really believe. But if 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 the planning board members actually want to even attend you know, entertain this, the escrow has to be something, not using the word punitive, but a proper incentive for you guys to actually get the paperwork done.
Well, let me respond to that challenge if I can.
Bill, do you mind if I hear from David first, please?
I'd like to hear Bill's, the rest of Bill's response first.
Thank you.
Okay.
We've been dealing with you as a family on this joint sketch plan application since May of twenty twenty one. And I think it's fair to say, everything that you have asked us to do, we have done. I could give you a long laundry list of specific requests that the planning board has made of us from submitting the joint sketch plan application to get the ball rolling to submitting most recently, a detailed application specifying precisely what we thought the suggested language in the amended approval resolution should be. My wife's family has owned this property for a hundred years.
That's for your benefit, though. To move it along.
I understand, but my point is, I think we've earned a little bit of trust from the planning board because we've done everything that you've asked us to do. And this just seems like another excuse to delay the closings. And
Absolutely.
We we respect, we respect whatever decision the planning board makes. But the idea of the escrow account came from the town attorney. It was proposed to us probably about a half an hour before it was proposed to Beth and proposed to the other members of the planning board. We did not blink when he suggested an escrow. We did not blink when he suggested fifty thousand dollars. Whatever other belts and suspenders you want to attach to this to make yourself more comfortable that we're going to do what we say we're going to do, just let us know what it is. But please allow these closings to take place.
So again, the belt and suspenders would be having this with, and and by the way, everything we've requested of you, we ask of every applicant. We're not asking or giving anyone any special privileges. You've you've asked us repeatedly to push the timeline to get this resolution done, which we've done. We've been bending over backwards with you at every stage. In twenty fourteen, you you really pushed us hard to get this done, and we did. We had a special hearing for you to get it done because we had to get it done. And then you guys disappeared for five months and then came back. If things are just, I I understand the process of pushing everyone as hard as you can to to make things happen. But I'm going to push back a little bit, and I think the SWIP sounds very attainable in in three or four more weeks. And I think, like we ask of every other applicant, we should wait for that in place. I'll tell you what, if if we get closer to the August thirty first, and I get something hard back from Butler's, Karen and and Butler's office or Kelly Rosado, I am more than willing to attend developing an extension at that point. We can also have the ability to consider that escrow, which we've only been thinking about these guys for five minutes now. And we will work with you, but let's first try to get the thing done as as we've outlined in this resolution. And it's my promise to everyone here, we will work with you again and again. But let's do it as we ask every other applicant how to do.
I appreciate that. I think Karen and I will do everything we can to get the application in Joe Lombardi's hands before the end of the week. Hopefully, that gesture of good faith on our part, coupled with some preliminary feedback from Joe, will make the planning board more comfortable with allowing some alternative approach here. I can't ask any more than they keep an open mind to what we've suggested. So thank you.
Sounds great. We most certainly will do.
Thank you.
I love to hear from you.
Yeah, I just have one question. Why hasn't the the amendment this, hasn't it been put in already? Why why is it going to take till the end of the week to put in the amendment requested? I'm asking like, why, if if this is the time thing, why isn't it just done? Why are we, why are you instead trying to get us to move our data, take it out of the wire? Why haven't you sent it in? It seems like you had all the information, have all the information to do the amendment.
David, my understanding is that our engineer was on vacation until last week and that he's been working diligently on everything as as soon as he got back in the office. And literally at four thirty this afternoon, we were told that there were two missing pieces of information that Karen and I are trying to put together. We found one of them already. The other missing piece is the archaeological survey that was done in two thousand and five. I found the name and phone number of the company that did the survey. I left a voicemail message with them at five o'clock this afternoon, and I'm going to be harassing them at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. So
I was trying to find the source of why this, I mean, we've been talking about this for a month. We knew we need to do an amendment. I'm sorry, your your person was on vacation, but I don't think we should suffer because of that.
I understand.
Understand. It it is just getting the technical pieces together between us, the engineer and the permitting consultant who does the environmental aspect of the application and just piecing it all together. It it has just taken time. So it's a little bit out of our control, but we are diligently working on that.
And then please get to Beth as soon as you are able, all those other documents, so she can review it on the planning board's behalf. You know, even before you get your final signatures, so that you're not wasting time putting signatures on things that may need be revisions.
Of course.
And then that.
The guess is, it would be very helpful if Beth or someone else could send us the final text of the amended planning board resolution so that we can review it and make sure the documents are consistent with everything that the planning board wants. And I think Karen and I have the principal responsibility for putting those documents in final form. So
This document right here that we're going to vote on right now, we'll certainly send that to you. And really, it takes all the language that you guys asked us to put into it. And we've accepted all the language except for the the SWIP extension and the roadway extension. Otherwise, it's a hundred percent what you guys requested of us.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Right. For what it's worth, I heard Beth say something about some changes to the mowing requirements. And that was when my screen froze up and I didn't hear the rest of it. So we don't need to waste your time with that now. But if you'll send us that resolution tomorrow morning, we'll review it. We'll incorporate all the provisions in the documents. And then we'll send those documents to the planning board and to Beth so you can start reviewing them.
Sounds great. So Julia, Marcus, David, are you ready to move ahead on this to vote it in? So So I'm going to make a motion to accept Resolution twelve of twenty twenty two. The resolution amending the conditional final approval for subdivision Nelson C White Estate. Five seconds.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, all.
We will not be disappointed in your decision, and we will get those documents and the SWIP application to you pretty quickly. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next thing, that's the end of our business meeting. Going to our work session, we have still waiting on for the final application for the Bloom Minor Subdivision, and we have to January tenth, twenty twenty three for that. They, we extended their deadline last month. The Kasek Minor Subdivision is moving along swimmingly, and we're just waiting for the final plat. They have, I don't think you guys have the September tenth, twenty twenty one, so we have to correct that date. Robert Subdivision, we're still waiting on the right of way access and the Health Department for Matt Sherman. S H twenty nine West Neck LLC Lot Line Adjustment, we're now waiting on the deeds to be reviewed. And the White Minor Subdivision, we're waiting on the various documents that they need to provide us. We have town sends us over the proposed twenty twenty three budget. And David, I'm going to have to email this to you. I apologize. I don't have a copy for you right here.
No problem.
There was a request to keep everything in our salaries and the training and everything within a two percent increase. We all know that inflation's at ten percent. So I, you know, as I keep saying, I don't, I don't, for me, this this is more of a something I like doing for the town, and it's not about salary, but I don't want to speak for everyone. And I know two years ago, there was no raise at all. Last year, we got two percent. What are your thoughts? Should we be adding a little bit more two percent salary on this or? To stick with the
Two again, two percent.
This is what we're being suggested to follow. Because I guess the state is mandating towns stick to a two percent cap. So is that, should we just raise it by two percent?
Well, we definitely shouldn't give it the same.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah.
Yes.
Only question I have is like, is the is the rest of the town doing the same? The only thing I would say is like, if the, what the board's doing, everybody else's, everybody else is doing kind of the same two percent across the board, then it gets fine. If we stick to two and everybody else gives themselves ten, that seems unfair. So it should be the consistent across in the budgets. We might.
Amber. We ask you. You weren't welcome to continue in on this. If you want to learn about our budget process and a couple of wetlands, please stay with us. But I do want to thank you for all your work today on the resolutions and the other phone calls we've had going forth. So
No problem.
But feel free.
I think I will.
But if you want to go, have your Chinese takeout, please do so.
Put my kid to bed. Good night.
Very much, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
Good night.
I, nothing has been decided yet. I know Jerry's been working on the initial presentation of budget, and I know that there's like columns for different percentages. So enough, like, you may want to try and do something like that. I know last time I checked, it was like, close to ten percent for the National CPI. The New York's, New York Region CPI is like six point seven percent. So we're trying to figure out like where things should land and keeping an eye on it as we, you know. It started out higher and it's like pulled back a little bit the past month. So as we get closer to having to decide on the budget, we'll be trying to lock in the rate. So
Something else to consider if they're asking us to take on more responsibility.
So yeah, so right now, so but we don't know, we, you know, that that the our ability to, the town board handing off the wetlands review now seems to have been postponed. And it seems like I'm talking to Stephen Kyle today, it's going to be pushed off till November or something. So we may or may not have that next year. We don't know what's going on with that.
Right, right. But hopefully we'll make that just, you know, like, we'll talk about that.
But we need to, we need to, we need to add to that if that's the case.
Yes, yes, exactly. And since it was talked about more than once, maybe we should bank on that half.
And we were all in favor of it. Discussion.
I I would say I would say from a budget's perspective, sorry, I'm echoing strangely. We have what we have, and I think it should be like, because no matter what, it's not like suddenly there's more money anywhere. It's like, so it seems to me like there should be a across all of the town employees, the a consistency of percentage of increase for just, if this is just the normal standard budget, if we decide then to change the roles and responsibilities, then I would think they'd want to re relook at what they're paying per group in some way. But it just seems to me that, again, it goes back to that gift. If one of the other groups is getting a five percent rating too, but there's no difference in in what works going on, that doesn't make as much, doesn't seem fair.
How would you, Amber, how would you recommend approaching that? Should we suggest two percent if nothing else changes? But if you guys give us this, we would ask for seven percent or something.
I guess what I would do is ask for, like, to be treated the same as everybody else as far as the percentage increase goes. So if the town board goes four percent, you want four percent. If it's ten percent, you want ten percent. And then if and if you're taking on more responsibility, then what do you think that that responsibility, you know, would translate to like an extra meeting a month? So therefore you need to increase by a certain amount, but you know, you've been looking at wetlands, so that's already incorporated in what you do, but
Yeah, so it's the it's
That's
Or you don't have to write those extensive reports, but we do have to.
Right, exactly. Exactly. So
The one thing that may change on that front, if I may, would be Joe and Beth's involvement. Because we'll be leaning more on Beth to write the resolutions that the town board does now. And Joe, Joe to use his expertise to report, review some of these wetland reports. And currently, let's see. I know White was a big hog on on our fees this year, but and they're saying that professional service to date was to June thirtieth was three thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. But we just spent that on E, again, on E H A today. Thirty six hundred or so in in fees for the last two months. So currently, their the budget is is twenty. So may, and we, in the past years, I don't think we've ever hit that top number. So if we just, we say, if we raise that one item to thirty, for instance, with the anticipation of a lot more wetlands reviews and their involvement, that might be something reasonable.
I would again, similar to the thing I would say is, the budget could be twenty, but if they decide to give us the wetlands, they need to increase it by up to thirty. In other words, in theory, that that money, it should be being utilized within the board since they're doing those and paying legal fees or doing things to do those. Or having been using Kylie's time, it would seem that that would be as part of the roles being moved to us. But then we would then get an increase in budget as part of that being handed to us.
But we have the, but they're asking to define the budget now. It doesn't get to find in November when the town.
The budget, the budget, budget can be, you can you can reallocate from one department to another, I would think, by resolution of the of the board, moving, they can move money around. It would seem to be that'd be, again, that'd be, might be an ask. It's like, if they, if they want to, they could either give it to us now with the idea that assuming that we'll be doing it. It's because again, it's budgets versus actuals. So then
And then, yeah, and many, and most years, we don't even use that entire budget. So
But you know, we we could get another property like White and be spending.
Yeah. And I'm glad we stuck to our guns and asked for a full application on that because we burned through every ounce of their their fee and then some on this one.
Agreed.
Otherwise, training, we haven't touched any of that. We have a two thousand dollar budget. That would
That was for the Association of Towns.
Association towns, which we haven't sent anyone in numerous years.
Right, because of COVID. So the expectation would be that in twenty twenty three
This spring.
That we would be back to going to associations.
And that would be two members as we've done in the past. Okay. For David's sake, that and Julie's, I think it's a big statewide Um, for David's sake, that, and Julie's, I think it's a big statewide meeting, usually in New York City.
Yeah.
That you.
It's ridiculous, yeah.
You have some, um, classes and. When the one I went to Schumer came up and spoke quite eloquently, yeah.
He, he patted me on the back.
Well, you have an open seat.
You were there, yeah.
Yeah, you have an open seat on the planning board. And because it hasn't happened in a couple of years, maybe put in for three thousand so that the three newest members could attend.
Okay.
Just, you know, as a liaison and wanting you to like be the best board that you can be.
Right.
Send the newest people.
Now I would up it for one year, just.
I, I also think.
I don't know if the rest of the town board will agree with me, but as your liaison, that would be my recommendation.
Um, and I also think, well, your idea of going from twenty to thirty. For professional, I, if it's not used, it's not used, but.
Yeah.
Box ourselves in.
Right.
And the same thing with, if we're taking on more duties, maybe somewhere between two and ten percent, somewhere, somewhere, just somewhere in the middle of that.
Yeah.
Again, if we don't, yeah.
I'd say two percent, well, we'll stop, follow the, the town, what everyone else in town's getting. But if we get the extra duties, ask for five percent more.
That's, yeah.
How can that be so low? Three thousand two thirty four for, through.
I, I don't know. These are the numbers that, um, Shelley.
So that if.
This includes today, right?
Well, no, no, it's.
No, that says as of June thirty.
Thirty, but.
But there may only be the may invoice in there. So there's just a lag in that when the bill comes in and gets paid and get, you know, the June bill gets paid in July, so it's not part of this. So that may actually be.
It seems like the professional services have gone up this year.
They have, um, so. We almost lost EHA and, um. When Kevin was transitioning out of the company. And they, um, at that point, I, I agreed with, um. Tony Pasca saying, he doesn't have to come to every meeting. Um, if he just writes the resolutions for us and, you know, we're willing to pay, we want to keep you as a historical asset with all the records and files. Uh, which has become very helpful to us. Um, and keep you involved. So I agreed to some minor increase or increase. And then Kevin, um, stayed on until they found a replacement with Beth. And then that's why Beth's been one of us. But I, I think we've been. Using both, working with Joe and Beth appropriately, because they don't come to every meeting.
Right now.
Only when there's, they, we need them for discussion. And they do their work in their office. And so it's really been, um, a way of tightening their budget.
Yeah.
But their hourly rates are a little bit more, uh, but they're, yeah, I think the overall billings are down because.
Right. I do remember in the past, uh, time where Ben's brought them, they were always here.
They were always, always here at all times. And it was actually something that, um. Paul Mobius started when he was here. We, there was really no reason for them to be here. Because there were times we only have a, we were meeting twice a month and we'd only have a seven minute meeting because we were just paying a bill or something. Uh, because there was nothing else to talk about.
Yeah.
Uh, there was no reason for them both to drive over here and then drive back. So it was something that, um, I'll give credit to Paul. So. Um, otherwise, uh, the other numbers, I have no, we haven't spent anything on printing and advertising. Well, that doesn't make sense. We didn't.
Yeah, we did.
We did pay three. So that number's not real, but we're nowhere near that two hundred dollar budget. Uh, and, uh, office and material, I guess that's ink and paper and whatnot. And. Uh, we have plenty left in that, so I'm not worried about that. David, I'll email this to you so you have it. So I think I have enough to, uh, respond. And I was supposed to do it by today, I believe. But.
It, it's still today and you're doing fine.
I'm not doing it tonight. I'll probably see that. Um, we have three wetlands applications in front of us. Um, David and Julia have been working on Singh already. I think you've pretty well ready to draft that report. We don't have a deadline. I don't think any of these wetlands applications have been how public hearings have been set for them. I was mistaken when I saw the, a date there. So, um, I think we have time until you get back to write the report. So, um, we have Daraviris and Rianza, Marcus and Julia signed up for that. And so we have a new one that we got today, Townsend. Uh, David, I'm going to give that to you and work with me on it. And we have your copy here for when you get back.
Good.
That's all I have. So, um, the only other thing I, I think is we, if, if you guys think about a fourth, a fifth member for this planning board, let's reach out. I asked, uh, through Amy Mobius, more, uh, Paul Mobius, and he, uh, he wasn't interested.
I asked the one too and they said no.
And I, I reached out to Christine, who I thought was really interesting, would be a great fit.
Yeah.
And, um, he said no.
Yeah, I reached out.
You're my person too.
So, um. We would love to fill this extra seat at some point, but. What we can do is keep asking. So.
It's great, David. You showed up to see us in.
Are you in the airport right now?
Yeah, I'm at the airport. I flew, I flew down to Dulles. So I was, I'm going from Dulles to, to, uh, Scotland. But because of the, all the storms in New York, I decided to get out of New York to get to Dulles to have a better chance. So I don't have to. Yeah, because the flights are getting delayed out of, out of JFK and such. So it worked out well.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, have a great break.
Have a great show.
And I, and I'm glad I was able to sit through the, the white, uh, thing. That was, that was good.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you, Jonah.
Okay. We're done?
Yeah, well done. Thank you.
I didn't hear a motion to close.
Oh, I make a motion to.
Yes, second that.
All in favor?
Look, see you guys.
Bye, James.